Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Council of the Town of Fort Frances to order, it being session number forty. Before we get too far into it, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, since it's our first meeting of the new year, to folks in the room and to folks at home. And I also want to give a special warm welcome to our newest employee, Chelsea Gregg. So, welcome, Chelsea. Chelsea is our new deputy clerk and communications officer. We've waited a long time to fill that position, so we're pretty excited to have you here, Chelsea. Okay. We'll begin with our territorial acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are within Treaty III territory, and that the land on which we live and work is the traditional territory of the Nishon Abi people and the homeland of the Métis Nation. As taught by a Treaty III Ojibwe elder, when we speak about the land, we recognize that we are the land. The land is all of us, both Indigenous and non-Indigenous. The land is the collection of our history, our current experiences, and our future together. We offer this land acknowledgement in the spirit of reconciliation, recognizing the historical and contemporary impacts of colonialism, while committing to working together as Indigenous and non-Indigenous people to build a better future. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interests, and if so, state the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we bring on, we have no delegations tonight, there are no presentations tonight. There is a piece of correspondence, and it's some good news. The addition to the Sister Kennedy Centre is going to be opened officially on January twentieth, so I'm hoping that council members and staff can make that. And there is another piece of information there, talking about Minister Rickford coming, but I understand now that Minister Rickford's office has cancelled that. Any comments on that correspondence? Looking at you, John. You're good? Okay. Anyone else have any comments on the correspondence? Okay, we'll go to reports. So I've already wished everybody a Happy New Year. I do want to do a public service announcement. The OPP have put out several warnings about thin ice due to above-average temperatures, and the river in particular is very dangerous, but any weather is current or moving water or open water, please exercise extreme caution. With the unseasonable warm weather, there simply is not enough ice formed in some areas to be safe for travel. So, at this time of year, if you were to fall in, hypothermia can result, and that can be fatal. So especially parents, please supervise your children when they are playing near frozen lakes or rivers, but to all of us, let's exercise caution. I'm just going to comment on a couple of things. I do want to speak very briefly on the webinar that I attended on strengthening public health. That was an excellent webinar, but what council might be interested in coming out of that webinar is that they're trying to improve public health, and so they're improving some funding, and one of the things they're going to allow health units to do, if the health units decide that that's in their best interest, is to merge. So there could be a possibility, say, of the Northwestern Health Unit merging with the Thunder Bay Health Unit, and I'm sure in the future we'll probably hear something from our rep, councillor Brunetta. But those mergers are completely voluntary, they'll not be forced, but it's something that you should be aware of. I do have to say, it was an excellent webinar, it was very informative, mostly put on by ministry people. I have the slide deck from the webinar, and I encourage you, if you're interested at all, just let me know and I'll send it to you. It's worth going through, and it doesn't take very long. And the other thing they're going to do is at AMO, there's going to be a follow-up to this webinar, which I certainly plan on attending. The other thing that I wanted to comment on is, this month is Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and Alzheimer is a very pernicious and prevalent form of dementia. We had a flag raising the other day, and we'll have the Alzheimer's flag flying for the month of January. I did want to point out that the local Alzheimer Society, which does some absolutely excellent work in helping people who have Alzheimer's and in helping caretakers who look after people with Alzheimer's, as any of these organizations do, they're trying to fund raise, and there's a couple of events that you might be interested in attending. On January fifteenth, there'll be three free virtual sessions for the public and one in-person session at the Library Technology Centre, so that's on April fifteenth. Completely free, very informative. And then the annual Forget Me Not Dinner is at La Place Rendezvous on January twentieth, and tickets are available for that at Northwoods, so I encourage everyone to get out and support this worthy cause. And that's enough from me with that, I'll move on to councillor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I attend a regular monthly meeting of the Fort Frances Public Library Board on Wednesday, December twentieth, during which the board passed a motion authorizing the library's CEO, working in conjunction with the town treasurer, to maximize investment returns of the library building fund through the purchase of GICs, et cetera. The board also is continuing to look at reinstating a service agreement with Koochting First Nation, similar to the one the library already has with Alberton Township. In terms of library programming, CEO Richard B. reported that between November eighteenth and December eighteenth, the library held twenty-eight sessions that attracted five-hundred-and-two participants. That compares to twenty-five sessions attracting four-hundred-and-fifty participants during the same period in 2022. As well, one hundred and twenty people attended a performance by the Rain Lake Community Orchestra held December fourth at the library. The CEO also reported that the new teen computers, which had been purchased from the 2023 capital budget, arrived at the library on December seventh and are in the process of being installed. The next regular monthly meeting of the library board is scheduled for Wednesday, January seventeenth, at four fifteen PM in the showroom. I also attended a special board meeting held on Thursday, December fourteenth, to discuss the library's 2024 operating budget, with preliminary estimates projecting a deficit of roughly $633,000, which is about five percent higher than last year. Another special board meeting to finalize the 2024 operating budget is scheduled for Thursday, January eighteenth, also at four fifteen PM in the showroom. With regards to the Rainy River District Municipal Association, I attend an executive meeting held Thursday, December seventh, at six PM at the Alberton Municipal Office, to finalize details for the RRDMA's annual general meeting, which is being held this Saturday, January thirteenth, at the AMO Legion. It begins at nine AM with registration getting underway at eight-thirty. The business portion of the meeting will include a report from the Resolutions Committee, which I sit on along with Morley Reeve, Telford Advent, and Dawson Reeve, Doug Hartnell. Also up for approval is the appointment to the Northwestern Health Unit of a representative of the west end of the Rainy River District, and the audit statement of revenues and expenditures for the period of January first to December thirty-first, 2023. I also can report that the RRDMA's levy to the Northwestern Health, Northwestern Ontario Municipal Association for 2024 will remain the same at $5,452.76, but an increase as expected for 2025. The rest of the day will feature guest speakers from the Rainy River Future Development Corporation, Ministry of Housing and Municipal Affairs, the Northwestern Health Unit, local MP Marcus Palowski, Ministry of Northern Development and Mines, FedNOR, the District of Rainy River Services Board, the Ministry of Transportation, and New Gold. As well, Fort Frances councillor John McTaggart will provide an update on a new Police Services Board encompassing Fort Frances and all district communities to our west that is set to take effect later this year. I also will add that new to the AGM this year is a social scavenger hunt, which is meant to bring some fun to the program, while encouraging delegates to mingle with their counterparts from across the district. Lastly, I attended the regular meeting of the Fort Frances Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors on Tuesday, December fifth, from eleven-thirty AM to one PM at La Place Rendezvous. I can report the chamber has repaid its CIBA loan in full by December thirty-first, 2023. The board also has reduced the number of sitting directors from seventeen to fourteen. As well, the chamber teamed up with the BIA to organize a sweet Christmas spirit promotion, which was held December fifteenth and sixteenth at various participating businesses to promote shopping local during the holiday season. I'm told there are lots of entries submitted for the draw prizes, with James Veitch being the grand prize winner. There also were twelve secondary draw prize winners, which all are listed on the chamber's Facebook page. Looking ahead, the chamber will hold its annual expo on April twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh at the Fort Frances Current Club. The next board meeting for the chamber is scheduled for Tuesday, January sixteenth, from eleven-thirty AM to one PM at the rendezvous. And that concludes my verbal update for this month.
Thank you councillor Bean. Councillor Brunetta.
Thank you, your worship. I attended the NOMA board meeting on November twenty-second, and I believe the clerk has already sent an update from, or a summary of that meeting to all of you by email. On December thirteenth, Wendy Landry, the NOMA president, Andrew Strauss and the NOMA's CEO and I, attended a virtual meeting with Deputy Minister of Health Elizabeth Walker. We discussed the Strengthening Public Health Initiative. President Landry indicated that on behalf of NOMA, she wanted to ensure that NOMA and health unit boards were on the same page, looking at this from a Northwestern Ontario lens and not just a municipal lens. We discussed the idea of volunteering to merge as opposed to being voluntold, as you just mentioned, Mayor. She likened the process to the changes for the Police Services Board in Ontario. I discussed our concerns about the vast geography, the varied administrative models, but I did indicate that both boards are open to examining possible synergies. Deputy Minister Walker indicated that she understood our concerns and expressed that it's difficult to give a consistent message that applies to all. So it's the one-size-does-not-fit-all model. She offered advice that we should try to be creative and not be restricted by how they are funding things now, because it may or may not be different in a few years, and that's part of the Strengthening Public Health initiative, is also to look at the funding model. It was a very productive meeting, and Deputy Minister Walker offered to meet us again if we felt it was necessary. Moving on to the Northwest Health Unit Board of Health, we met virtually on December first. As the vice chair, I'm also on the Executive Committee and the Voluntary Merger Assessment Committee. This last committee has met on December fifth, fifteenth, and January fifth. The committee has tendered an RFP for the assessment, the merger assessment, and received six submissions. On January fifth, a successful bidder was chosen, and we are now in the process of completing the contract. As you can imagine, the timelines are very tight on this process, and we'll be meeting frequently over the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brunetta. Councillor Olson.
Mi'gwich, Mayor. So I knew councillor Bean was going to report on the library, so I'm going to skip that. And I also sit on the Committee for the Fort Frances Volunteer Bureau, and their last meeting fell at our last council meeting, and I knew you guys were going to miss me, so unfortunately I had to send my regrets to that table as well. But I do have just a few things to touch on coming into 2024, and just reporting on some of the other committees and committee involvement for the last month. The first one is the Agency One Information Session, and I did provide everyone at the table here kind of a written report, just to give folks, I guess, the opportunity to read it on their own, too. So as a member of the Indigenous Relations Committee, I had the opportunity to participate in the Agency One Information Session that was held on December sixth, 2023. This information session was designed to share on the current Indian Residential School Reclamation Project, which includes searching for missing and unmarked graves of children who attended the schools. And you'll see, I put in parentheses the other S, because there was actually two schools at the Agency One site. There was the original school, and then there was the secondary school that we know as the Nanakos Building. I cannot stress the importance of gathering to share knowledge, and how incredible the presentation was that evening. For those in the room tonight, I've attached a document which reflects a list of numbers, names, and First Nation community representation. For most, this may just depict a simple registry list, but I wanted to share with all of you the deeply inherent connections that many of us have to the experiences and traumas that took place at St. Marguerite's, which is the school that existed at Agency One. So when you look at the list on the left-hand side, I wanted to make note of student two-twenty-two, Albert Morrison. You may or may not be aware, but this is my husband's grandfather. The records indicate that he attended from the age of eight to sixteen, however, our family members remember his attendance at a much younger age. So just some history and kind of a little bit of background, the federal government said that children could be removed from their homes as, I want to say, I guess, late as the age of six. However, in our family, we recognize that Albert attended the school prior to even that age. So I just wanted to share just a little bit about Albert, and I think it's important when we're talking about issues such as this. And Albert was born in nineteen forty, and he was removed from his home and placed in the school, so it wasn't a choice for him to be in attendance. Within that, there was many experiences that happened, but more importantly, I wanted to talk tonight about after he attended the school, and this is some of the intergenerational connection that we have to his story. So after he attended, he never returned to speaking his language, his born language of Nishon Abi, M'wain or Ojibwe. He never carried a bundle, so he never carried those items that we carry as Indigenous people to keep ourselves protected and safe or to take care of our families. He put those things down forever. And early kind of into his twenties, he actually sold his status rights to commercial fish to provide for his family. So he had no other means. He did not finish school because he left the school, and the only way that we could, you know, survive as a family was selling our rights, so he sold his Indian status, which he regained about forty-five years later, right before dying. His story is his to share, but I can tell you, because of fears, hardships, and the abuse that happened in many forms, he kept his story tightened to himself. So growing up, and even before he died, my husband doesn't remember a moment of him ever talking about his experience in that school, however, he spent the majority of his life there. And I think that says something when we're talking about these intergenerational stories and trying to heal from the truths and heal from each other. There's many pieces to his story that we don't know and we will never know. Intergenerational trauma is real and exists today within many Indigenous people, including our community members of this municipality. This is not an old history, and it's present and living in real and everyday stories. Further to this, I encourage the leaders at this table to join Agency One this coming Wednesday, January tenth, as well as the greater community to participate in any healing, learning, and storytelling opportunities that better our knowledge and understanding of the history and truths of Indigenous peoples. And I just wanted to, before I kind of jump into the Eighth Street Trails, I really appreciated when we were, when we were at the information session, they talked specifically about this project being a reclamation project, not truth and reconciliation, about reclamation. And so for each one of us, I think that looks a little bit different, and for tonight, in my space and the privilege that I do have of being at this table, that's part of my reclamation, is sharing the story of my own family and how those intergenerational things have impacted us, including my children. So I'm not trying to be a damper, but those are those truths that I think we sometimes need to just sit and listen and share and talk to each other about, and I feel safe enough to do that in this moment tonight. Further to that, we had, this would be the second Eighth Street Trails committee meeting, however, I missed the first, but I was able to attend last week, and it was so amazing to hear the updates and the hard work that takes place over at those trails. I didn't even realize, I just assumed everything just kind of happens. So sitting with the committee, it was so powerful to hear the work that's been done and kind of the things to come, so I didn't do a huge report on it, but there was a couple exciting things, I think, to share at this table. The trails received a brand-new snow machine that was delivered earlier this week, so now the trails can be groomed and they can be safe for the community to go out and utilize them, as well as new signage that I just heard needs to be updated again because they put in another new trail. But the signage is beautiful, it's really beautiful, so I figured I would just take a moment to talk about, it's a really wonderful land-based space that we have in our community. The last piece of it, I want to just do a really quick shout-out to the volunteers that are over there. They work hard, like, day in and day out, keeping that space clean, safe, updated, you know, inspired, there's so much art out there. So it was a really beautiful space, and I, you know, I'm pretty humbled being on that committee and seeing the work that's being done. So our next meeting is February first, and I'm looking forward to it. So that's it for me tonight, mi'gwich.
Councillor Olson, chimi'gwich for sharing your personal story, it was very powerful. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda, we have three items tonight. Starting at eight-point-two, recommendation reads that council approve the regular council meeting minutes of December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and the special council meeting minutes of December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Eight-point-three are boards and committee meeting minutes, and the recommendation reads that the following boards and committees' meeting minutes be received as information. We have the Fort Frances Nonprofit Housing Corporation from October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Committee of Adjustment from October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Sister Betty Kennedy Advisory Committee from October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Police Services Board from October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the Museum and Culture Advisory Committee from November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Sister Betty Kennedy Advisory Committee from November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the Fort Frances Public Library Board from November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Councillors, would any of you like to pull any of those? Councillor? Oh, did I miss one? Oh, eight-point-four, thank you. Eight-point-four is dealing with a proposed telecommunications tower, which will be at six fifty Sixth Street West, and the recommendation reads that council receive report number AR- dash twenty-four dash oh four eight oh, and a letter of concurrence be submitted to Forbes Brothers Limited on behalf of T. Batel for the proposed installation of a forty-meter monopole telecommunications tower at six fifty Sixth Street West. And now councillors, would you like to pull any of those? Councillor Brunetta? Okay, anything else? Okay, over to you councillor.
Just note the minutes for the Sister Betty Kennedy meeting, both October twenty-fifth and November eighth, there's no attendance recorded. They're both blank.
All right. So the recommendation reads now the council approve the consent agenda as follows, agenda items eight-point-two, eight-point-three, and eight-point-four. Mover and seconder, please. Councillor McTaggart, councillor Olson. Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried, no one is opposed? Okay, moving to item number nine, which is Administration and Finance Division Reports. Nine-point-one, we have to make a decision. I'll put the recommendation on the floor, and then we can make that decision. The recommendation reads that council receive report AR dash twenty-three dash oh four seven-nine, outlining the 2024 Moffett Family Fund with an allocation of $103,750. And that, and now you'll have to select one of these two recommendations. Number one, that council approve the use of up to three percent of the total amount for grant-making administration, covering the cost up to $3,113, reducing the fund allocation to $100,637. Or option number two, that council cover the remaining administration costs, providing the total allocation of $103,750 for the recipients. And then further, that council appoint two members to the Moffett Family Ad-Hoc Committee. So I just need a mover and seconder to get that on the floor. Councillor Bean, councillor Gercher? Okay, so the first choice, option one or option two, suggestion councillors? Councillor Brunetta?
It's more of a question. I know we haven't, or I don't believe we've done an administrative holdback in the past, is there?
It came up last year to the committee, and the committee decided not to hold it back, to put all the money in. So this will be the second year this has come up.
I'm, you know, I leave it up to administration, if there are costs that we're incurring, I don't think it's off-base to actually withhold some of that funding. It's a good chunk of money, so I would be in favor of option one.
Other comments? Yes.
Thank you, your worship. I think I'm more leaning to not taking any administrative charges, as all this money is going to charitable organizations that scrape and claw for every penny they get, and I'd just hate to see us take $3,000 out of the pot to cover some minimal expenses, but thanks.
Thank you councillor. Councillor McTaggart?
Thank you, your worship. Just for administration through you, your worship, do we have an idea what the cost is to administer this?
Go ahead. I don't think we necessarily have a specific cost that's worked out, there's a fair amount of staff time that goes into preparing agendas and packages and taking applications and then notifying the successful recipients, reports back to council. So it's a lot of staff time that goes into a not necessarily tangible, you know, paper, things like that.
Just for council's information, this question came up last year, and the committee last year decided to forego it, and it came out of the council's public relations budget. Just put that out for information. Other comments? Councillor Bean?
I tend to agree with councillor Mackie, I think that all the money should go to the groups that are applying for it, because they're all doing great work in our community, and I think, as councillor Mackie said, every penny counts for them, so I have no problem foregoing that three percent charge.
Further comments? So I have two comments in favor of not taking the money out, and one, does anyone else want to weigh in? Otherwise, councillor Gercher?
I agree with the consensus.
Okay, so it looks like the consensus is that we'll be going with option number two. Okay, so option number two on that choice, and then we need two members pointing to the Moffett Family Fund. In the past, members were appointed at the first meeting of council, and then they were there for the term, but we have a new policy now, and so we're following the new policy, so we appoint members to this committee annually. So any volunteers? Councillor Mackie? Anyone else like to be on the committee? Don't be shy, it's not an owner's job. Councillor McTaggart? Thank you. So we've got councillor Mackie and councillor McTaggart, and I'll sit on as ex officio. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried, no one is opposed. Thank you. Okay, on to item number ten, and you have another decision to make. So again, I'll put this one on the floor. This was an oral motion from our last meeting, and thanks to administration for writing it up. Item ten-point-one reads that council directs administration to create a maximum of thirty welcome packages per year for the Fort Frances and District Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee comprising of town-branded merchandise and items defined in option, and then you have to choose one. And the two options are, option one is that the cost of the welcome packages will be transferred, oh, sorry, and that the cost of the welcome packages will be transferred from council's public relation budget to the appropriate expense GL, and that administration continues to provide welcome packages for the remainder of the term of council. And in your packages, there were three options, four options, I don't have my package in front of me. Would you, oh, thank you. Would you, oh, thank you. So the four options are, option one is a five-day pass that doesn't expire, option two is a 10-day pass that doesn't expire, option three is a one-month membership, and option four is a three-month membership. And just if you've forgotten the cost, the five-day pass was $1,063, the 10-day pass was $2,127.90, the one-month membership was $2,052.70, and the three-month membership would come out to be $5,5899. And the recommendation from administration is option number two. So with that, I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor so we can discuss it. Moved by Counselor Burnett, seconded by Counselor Olson. What are your drawers, counselor? Counselor McTaggart?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question, though. The town branded merchandise is there for sure.
Yes.
And we're deciding which of the four to go with?
Yes.
Okay. And the recommendation is for the 10-day pass?
Yes. And I see a "and" there from our manager.
Yes, through the chair, I just thought I would expand on that a little bit as to why the 10-day pass was the recommendation. 10-day pass would give that individual a substantial experience into the sports center, an opportunity to utilize the gym, the pool, potentially some skating, all of the different yoga classes and such that we do have to offer. So by doing 10 days, they'd really get to experience the full facility in hopes that they would then become an annual member after that.
Further discussion or questions? Counselor Burnett?
So just to be clear, this is a welcome package that will be given to visiting physicians who are doing their residency or covering locums, things like that. It doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be permanent doctors here, but we saw it as a way, the committee saw it as a way to promote our community as well as make it more attractive to people. So they may say, hey, you know what? I think I might like to live there. So I'm definitely in favor of the recommendation. I'm just wondering, Nathan, if there's a possibility of tracking how much this is used, because we may want to alter it in the future?
Yes, through the chair. So when we put these packages together, we'll be tracking the air-quote "sale" of the package for that member that gets put into our system, and we are able to pull that member's information to see how many passes were used, so that if we do decide to change that in the future, we can. The way that the recommendation reads right now is that we would move into this agreement for the full term of council, and so we may want to consider making an amendment to that recommendation if we wanted to review this in a year and change the package details at that time.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Behan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I do also agree with option two, because I like the fact that it's not an expiry date. Because if they're, it's a locum, they're here for two weeks, what's the use of having a month of membership or a three-month membership? And then if they come back, you know, six months later to the locum again, you know, again, it's no good. So I like the idea of the 10-day pass that has no expiry dates, they can use that at their leisure when they are here. Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none, then I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Excellent. That carries, and that's option two. Okay, 10.2, recommendation reads that council rescind the Memorial Sports Center refund policy 2.4. Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Behan? Counselor Olson? Any discussion on this one? Seeing none? All in favor? It's carried, no one is opposed. Item 11, there are no Planning and Development Division reports. Item 12, Operations and Facilities reports, there are none. That brings us to item 13, which are bylaws. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven bylaws. Recommendation reads that the following bylaws be introduced and read, finally passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed with a corporate seal, and become law forthwith. Bylaw 01-24 being a bylaw to authorize the temporary borrowing for 2024. Bylaw 02-24 being a bylaw to provide for an interim tax levy in the year 2024, and to provide the penalty and interest to be charged on the unpaid balance for late payment of said interim taxes, all as provided for in the Municipal Act 2001, bracket the act, SO 2001, Chapter 25, Sections 307, 317, and 345. Bylaw 03-24 being a bylaw to adopt a multi-year accessibility plan for 2023 to 2028. Bylaw 04-24 being a bylaw of the Town of Fort Francis to adopt a membership and programs policy. Bylaw 05-24 being a bylaw of the Town of Fort Francis to adopt a winter control operations policy. Bylaw 06-24 being a bylaw of the Town of Fort Francis to adopt an asset retirement obligation policy. And finally, bylaw 07-24 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with George Armstrong Limited, RE, RFT 2023-OF-07-2, year supply and delivery of granular materials and ready-mix concrete. A mover and seconder for that, please. Counselor Burnett? Counselor Olson? Any discussion? Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, your worship. In regards to the temporary borrowing by law, I guess my first question is, how long is it expected before we're able to pay off this $4 million loan? I'll leave that to somebody who can answer that.
That'll be the treasurer.
So through the chair, it's not actually likely that we'll use it. We just kind of protect ourselves by passing this bylaw first thing every year, should we need to. Our bank account does provide for $4 million that we can go into the red, I suppose. So I've never, since I've been here, ever had to use it.
Okay.
That was all your questions? You're good? Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call the question, then. All in favor? And that's carried, no one is opposed. Item number 14, no notice of, there's nothing to reconsider. Item 15, no closed session tonight. Item 16, so nothing to report. And so that brings us to our confirmatory bylaw. And the recommendation reads that bylaw 08-24 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation of the Town of Fort Francis be introduced, read, and finally passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed with a corporate seal, and become law forthwith. Mover and seconder? Counselor Behan, Counselor Burnett? Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried, no one is opposed. Wow. So that brings us to the final recommendation, that having reached the hour of, 6:09, that this meeting of the council of the Town of Fort Francis be now closed. Mover and seconder, Counselor McTaggart and Counselor Mackey? All in favor? Carried. Good work, counsel.